All right, we're actually ready, right? New setup, so be patient. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna call this workshop of the Martin County School Board to order. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call roll Ms. Pritchett.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
And let the record reflect that Mr. Dietrich Lezzi is not present today. Okay, next up, we have open to the public. Citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from the board members or superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the board should not exceed three minutes. First up is Cindy Summers.
Right here.
Right here, right behind you.
Good afternoon, school board members and Superintendent Maine. My name is Cindy Summers. At the end of August, a Moms for Liberty group attended an Indian River School Board meeting. They read to the board what they called offensive—can you hear me okay?
No.
Okay. Offensive and inflammatory passages from 57 books. Over and over again, the board stopped them from continuing and unanimously agreed to remove the books. Relying on wording in HB 1069, the group bypassed the objection process, but I contend that they misinterpreted HB 1069. HB 1069, lines 313 to 318, read in part, "Parents shall have the right to read passages from a material that is subject to an objection. If the school board denies a parent the right to read passages due to content, the school district shall discontinue use of the material." It reads, "subject to an objection." No objection was filed here. It appears the Indian River School Board violated the terms of HB 1069. Please consult with your council to make sure you don't do the same thing. This is about School Board Policy 2522. I would encourage the board to choose Option 1 for the revised 2522 policy. It removes the burden and responsibility of the principal and director of curriculum from having to make removal decisions. And it's much fairer because it allows for a review process comprised of people with different views, knowledge, and experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up—
I also have some handouts for the board. Who should I give these to?
You'll have to give them over there, and then they'll make sure we get them, and it's part of the record. Thank you. Next up is Julie Marshall.
Good afternoon, school board members and Superintendent Maine. I just wanted to say that I am really proud of the new list that came out of the Florida Department of Education that Martin County is second in the state for removing inappropriate books in our school libraries. So, thank you very much for that. Also, there has been a couple of emails in regard to a previous email I sent, and I think it was very much misinterpreted, and who I'm talking about is Ms. Jennifer DeShazo. I want it just clarified. I think she's absolutely fabulous. I don't think that the school district could do without her. She probably doesn't get near enough credit that she deserves. So, I just hope that—I wanted to clear it up that what I said in that was absolutely no dig at her whatsoever. I think she's wonderful, and I guarantee you probably don't even pay her enough for everything she does. So, thank you.
Thank you, and you're right. She is pretty wonderful, so. All right, that concludes public comment unless there's someone else that has not submitted a form. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our school board policies. Just—Item 3.01 was removed from this agenda, so we'll move right into our policies. All right, so Item 4.01 is our first policy, and the policy number is 2210. It incorporates changes required by HB 5101 and 7.7039. The district is now required to implement a system of comprehensive reading instruction for students enrolled in kindergarten through grade 12 and certain students who exhibit substantial deficiency in early literacy. Are there any questions from the board? I just had one question, and it was— when—I just wondered when the plan was due. Do we know when that plan is due? That's okay. You can report back. It's fine. And then the other—my other question was in the second paragraph—or not second paragraph, the second— paragraph number two. And it says—it said the school—the superintendent shall report. I was just curious about the timing of the reporting to the school board. If it's before implementation, once it's implemented, kind of where we fall, we probably need to clarify that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Up next is Item 4.02. This is Policy 2417. The revisions are the result of HB 379 and 1069 and related to instruction of the social, emotional, and physical effects of social media on students in grades 6 through 12 and parent notification of the availability of the Florida Department of Education's instructional material. Parent opt-out language has also been revised in the policy as well as requirements for the district to include a link on its website homepage so that students, parents, can access and review certain instructional material. The district is also required to annually review and confirm that the information on its website is accurate and notify parents by physical or electronic means anytime revisions are made. Finally, the policy now specifies that materials used to teach reproductive health or other diseases, including HIV/AIDS, its symptoms, development, and treatment as part of the courses referenced in Florida Statute 1003.42 must be approved by the Florida Department of Education, not the school board. Are there any questions from the board on this item? I just had one comment. I wondered if it should be rename—the name of the policy to comprehensive health and life skills education. That's referenced in the policy, the life skills piece which was added. So, if we could—that way, if—when you're searching for it, it—you—it won't get lost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Item 4.03. That's Policy 2421. The revisions are to include a requirement that each high school in the district host a career fair during the school year and establish a process to provide students in grades 11 and 12 the opportunity to meet or interview with potential employers during the career fair. These revisions are based on Senate Bill 240. Are there any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Do we already do that?
Yes, we do, and Lana Barros—
Microphone.
Yeah.
We do, and Lana Barros can represent this item if she would come. She can explain exactly what—we are—
Sure. I knew that it was there, that—so, we're not—we're just accepting the policy.
Well, it does say during the school day as well. I think the career fair that we have done has been in the evening. I know that it's references that you can also bring together multiple high schools and do one career fair, but it specifically says during the school day, so.
So, that is true. So, the new policy, the way it's written—so Lana Barros, Director of Innovation and Choice. We have held a career exploration fair for eighth-grade students the last two school years, which was during the school day. The intent of the statute is for 11th and 12th grade students. So, last year, we did hold our very first Secure My Future event, which was in the evening. So, this year, we are planning to hold it during the school day, one unified event, actually in this building.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Not during the school day, though, right?
So, the during the school day part, it needs to be during the school day if it's in the policy. So, yeah, it would be during the school day.
Well, and the other piece of that was that it would be convenient for all schools coming to that, so we just need to be mindful of the location, that it's convenient for parents to get here.
So, one of the main reasons of us doing it in the evening is sometimes the parental nudge helps the students explore and speak with community partners to do the interviews. So, we're still working out the details, but we're gonna make it so that it works for all.
Well, I know this would be a really long way for parents from some—the western part of the county to come during the school day.
This is true.
Especially this location, so. Ms. Roberts?
The green area says the career fair must be held on a campus of the high school, except that a group of high schools in the district or the district and other school districts may hold a joint fair at an alternative location to satisfy this requirement. So, are you thinking that having a joint one here at this location is satisfying that language?
So, we were—that was our plan, was to bring the three high schools together for one joint fair, but we haven't set the date yet, and so I do want to consider the western zone in our plan. So, that would just mean that we would have to have one at each one of the three high schools.
Thank you.
Or you could have one at South Fork.
So, we did. That was—who hosted last year was South Fork, and all the other schools didn't like that. They thought it was too far for them to drive. So, we'll consider everyone's feedback and make sure that it's—it is very well-attended by all.
Well, I'm glad that they're thinking of that and not the people that drive from really far. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Oh, I have one other question. It references in the—in that one to Florida's online career planning and work-based learning system.
Yes.
I went to the website trying to find that, and it was—I couldn't find it.
So, our school district website? All right. I will make sure that we have it updated, so then—
Probably needs to be more prominent if we're asking parents and kids to use it as a tool. If I couldn't find it, it's probably gonna be even more difficult—
For them.
—for them to navigate.
Absolutely. We will get on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4.04 is selection and adoption of instructional materials. The revisions to this policy reflect the statutory changes in HB 5101 and require that the superintendent certify to the commissioner of education by July 1 the estimated allocation of state funds for instructional materials for the upcoming year. It defines library media center to include materials maintained in the classroom and provides for a certification by the superintendent to the commissioner of education by August 1 regarding board approval of staff development—of a staff development plan that supports fidelity of implementation of the instructional materials program, verification of training provided, and compliance with K-5 reading materials in Florida Statute 1001.215 (Pren 8). Statutory changes in House Bill 1069 are also included in this policy and include new requirements related to the following. One, duties of principals with respect to instructional materials. Two, adoption and publication on the board's website, the process for a parent to limit their student's access to materials in the school or classroom library. Three, the process and requirements related to objections by a parent or resident to the use of materials, including reporting requirements. And four, revisions to the New World Reading Initiative. Are there any questions from the board on this policy? Ms. Roberts?
On page 3 of 4, under the purchase of instructional materials, the third paragraph says—the—
You gotta—you gotta—you get your mic towards your face as you're looking at it—as you're looking at what you're reading.
On page 3 of 4, under purchase of instructional materials, it has—the third paragraph says, "The superintendent shall approve these purchases."
Well, I think, yeah, depending on the amount, it's probably not within his—
It's gonna be outside.
So, we just need to change that to—
Over a dollar amount? Well, I mean, I just think—because we're talking about the ones that are the major tool for instructions for the— the major course code piece, right?
And that's in the millions?
Yeah. I just found it odd that—
On page 3, which paragraph are you looking in?
Underneath, like, three-quarters of the way down, under purchase of instructional materials, the third paragraph. I mean, in number—in the first paragraph, it said, "The board will purchase all materials as a separate line item on a regular non-consent agenda and will provide opportunity for comment." But then the third paragraph, "The superintendent shall approve these purchases," just seemed a little bit odd to be there.
Yeah, we should probably just remove that, and then depending on the authority and the amount, then it'll come back to the board.
So, remove the sentence, "The superintendent shall..."
I think so, yeah. Is everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is 4.05. Did I just do 4.05?
No, you did.
That's selection. Sorry, I just sneezed. And this is the—pretty much the same. It's just a different—different policy number, but this is pretty much the same that I read before. It does have in 1069, "The duties of the principal, adoption and publication on the board's website, the process and requirements related to objections by a parent or resident to the use of materials, including reporting requirements, and duties of instructional materials reviewers, and revisions to the New World Reading Initiative." Are there any ques—are there any questions on this item, 4.05? Okay, next up is 4.06, "Challenges to adoption or use of instructional library or reading list materials." This is also as a result of HB 5101. It requires the superintendent to certify to the commissioner of education the allocation. Again, it's "The duties of the principals, the process and requirements related to objections by a parent or resident to the use of materials, including reporting requirements, revisions, and this is also revisions to the New World Reading Initiative." Do you have some questions?
Sure. The first one is—the first speaker who spoke said something about this particular policy and was talking about Option 1, but I don't see an Option 1, Option 2, so I don't know what that clarification is. If that person is still here, perhaps they could indicate.
Yes, if there's—if you want to come up and—if you want to speak at the microphone, please. And please speak into the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, I got a rough draft of the revised 2522, and it had in it three options to pick from—for the board to choose. And that—that's what I'm talking to. It must have changed since I saw it.
There's no options in here. I'm not sure where you've received that one from. Oh, that might be the— Okay. And then I had another clarification that I wanted to wrap my head around, talking about pages 2 and 3. So, page 2 talks about objections and talks about that parents and residents of the county can object to materials. Then it says that the objector then meets to resolve the objection, et cetera. Then, if you look on page 3 of 3, about a third of the way down, it says, "If a parent disagrees with the determination made by the board on an objection, then the parent can ask for the special magistrate." So, it appears it's not if the objector disagrees, it's if any parent disagrees. So, I just wanted—to understand that clearly, that—so, for example, a parent or a resident can object to a material. That parent or resident then becomes the objector, and then that's the person who is trying to come to an agreement, et cetera, with the district, whether it's with the principal, whether it's with the curriculum director, et cetera. But at the end of the day, when the decision is made, if any parent—not parent or resident, but if any parent doesn't like the decision, then the parent can then request a special magistrate. Is that the understanding?
That is directly—I looked at this, too, because I—I pulled up the statute, and that is verbatim what the statute says.
It is, and I had asked Greg Black, because normally, a special magistrate comes in if you don't agree with the decision. If you're the person who had the objection, who went through the whole process, it's your piece that then you have the ability to ask for a special magistrate. But there is nothing from either Neola or from the Department of Education that is saying that the way that it normally works, with the objector being the one who's gone through the process, being further unhappy, can then their next step is to go to a special magistrate. This is allowing anybody in the world who is a parent—
But a parent is defined as—a—there's another section that defines the parent, and it means a parent of a student in the district. That's the definition of a parent.
Sure, sure. So, it had to be a parent of a student in the district. But I just wanted to—to make that clarification, that it's not if the objector— because otherwise, they would have used the word "objector."
Right.
The objector would be able to then ask for a special magistrate. So, in this case, a parent of a student in the district would be able to ask for a special magistrate. Correct?
If they disagree with the decision of the board, then a parent of a student in the district would have—the would be able to object to that.
Okay, then I had one further clarification to understand is, if the objection is satisfied to the satisfaction of the objector at either the school level or the district level, is that considered a decision of the board? Or does it have to go all the way to the board level to give the parent of a student in the district the right to object and ask for a special magistrate?
It's—the—if the board makes the decision—that's the way I read it. If the board makes the decision, that's when the objection can—happens. So, if the board says whatever, yes or no, and a parent in the district disagrees with that, then they can object at that point.
So, it's not if—so, your feeling is that the—the right for a special magistrate only comes after it's been to the third step of the board?
Yes.
If it gets to the third step. And if it doesn't get to the third step, the parent doesn't have the right to ask for a special magistrate? Is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So, if it—
Wait, talk into your mic, please.
I'm sorry. So, if a parent or a resident objects, they go to the principal, and the principal cuts it right there. They wouldn't have to object because it was already taken care of. When it gets to the board, it's because the parent doesn't like what the principal or the library media specialist—
Right.
So, it comes to the board as a final. If the board makes a decision and the parent is not happy, they then can get a magistrate.
Or the objector in general.
Correct. So, it's—so, I—I understood it that way, which would make sense with what normally happens with a special magistrate. But the way the language is written is if Jane Doe objected to—to kill a mockingbird and was not happy with the principal's discussion, was not happy with the—the director of curriculum, and then it went to the board, and the board said, "We don't agree with the director of curriculum. We don't agree with the principal. We want to remove the book." Okay? Then, any other parent in the district—has nothing to do with the objector at that point. Any other parent in the district then has the right to say, "I want a special magistrate."
Well, of course, because they're—they're the impacted party because their children are in the school. And just to be clear, we have not—to kill a mockingbird has never been objected to.
No, no, I know. I was just—
I just don't want there to be any confusion about that.
Sure. But I—I mean, I think the difference is that if it gets to the board decision, that then anybody has the right to object, not just the objector. So, once it comes to the— Any parent. Once it comes to the board, either a parent—either the objector is going to object if they don't like it, or a parent who's on the other side is going to object, right? This says if it gets to the board and they don't like the decision, a parent of a student in the district can object and get a magistrate.
So, you couldn't—if you filed an objection, and it got to the board, and you didn't like it, you would have to—a parent would have to ask for a special magistrate. If you do not have children—
In the district.
In the district. That's exactly verbatim from the statute.
So, just—so, if I am a citizen without children in the district—
You could not object.
I can't ask for a special magistrate.
The decision of the board would be final unless someone said, "Oh, well, I don't agree with that final decision," and they were a parent of a student in the district.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And that is literally straight from the statute, unless DOE comes out with some other interpretation of—and rule—
Right, and in talking—to Greg Black, he was thinking that they would come out with something because normally, the right for a special magistrate is for the person who is unhappy with the district's decision, that—the objector who's gone through the whole process and is now unhappy with the district decision. But in this case, it doesn't have to be the objector who's unhappy. It can be any parent of a student in the district, so. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Item 4.07, Policy 6450. This policy is to accommodate the statutory changes in HB 3 to prohibit the board from requesting documentation of considering or making a preference based on a vendor's social, political, or ideological interests. Any questions on this one? Okay, seeing none. 4.08 is Policy 8475, criminal—excuse me, criminal background screening for contractor access. Senate Bill 676, modified statutory requirements related to criminal history checks through the Care Provider Background Screening Clearinghouse, including provisions related to potential employees, employees, contractors, and volunteers. SB 676 also extended timelines for re-screening individuals and added new requirements for initial status and changes—changes in status reporting. Are there any questions about this? I just had one question about the January 1, 2024, reporting date. So, if it was prior to January 21, 24, it was five days, and then after that, it's three days. How does that impact contractors? Is it—are they reporting to—they self-report? Tell me, do—we know a little bit about that? Any additional information?
So, we can—we can get you the clarification on that, but it is to my knowledge that they're in the reporting system going through the background screening. So, not only would they self-report, but we would get notification through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement that there was an arrest made.
So, is—who are—what's the three-day—three and five-day? What are—whose reporting, I guess? In three—in the five days prior to January?
Understood, yeah.
And whose—
Reporting out.
Yeah, so what—kind of understand—I would like to understand that. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is item 4.09, and this is policy 8500, Food Service Program. HB 443 requires that each school cafeteria have a poster that is easily visible and prominently placed that contains step-by-step instructions on how to provide emergency first aid for choking unconscious individuals. Policies 8410.01 and 8500 are revised to refer to this requirement. Are there any questions on this item, 4.09?
So it says that 8410.01 is revised? We don't have an 8410.01. I, I don't know if that's just in the, the verbiage, the description verbiage. It doesn't really, it isn't referred to in our policy at all, but.
All right, we'll check on that.
I just didn't want somebody to think they could be looking for 8410.01 and find out it doesn't exist.
We notated it.
Okay.
And are there any changes we need to make to 8500?
There's not, it doesn't refer to it in there. I think it's just in the blurb.
Okay.
So Ms. Falls, this blurb is the one that comes from Neola, is that right?
Yeah, but I thought we checked it, but we will look at it again.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, the revisions to policy, this is item 4.10. The revisions to policy 8800 are based on the Supreme Court decision in Kennedy versus Bremerton School District. The Bremerton decision reinforced employees' rights to the free exercise of religion such that a First Amendment analysis regarding the district action must consider whether the employee is exercising their free exercisable rights. The revisions to policy 8800 further clarify how the U.S. Constitution applies to religious and other ceremonies and observances in the district and the rights of students and employees in these areas. Are there any questions about this one? So I guess I'm just, I didn't have time to talk to our attorney about it, but I wondered what the, because I thought that one was related to a coach that did prayer before a football game.
Yeah, and, and won the case.
But our policy says.
It can't be led by a coach, it can be led by a student.
It basically says that no, if you're extra, if you're, so how, how's, that seems contradictory to me, to the decision, so maybe I want to understand what that means.
Further, what that, yeah.
So if we could get that clarification for the next, I didn't understand, because I know we didn't, we added some information in green but left some, so I.
Yeah, we'll get that.
I thought it was the coach, an employee can't lead it, but a student can.
Right, but the employee won the case, was cleared of leading the prayer, that's what I'm saying, before a football game. The coach was the one that was the, not a student. So I don't know what the, I'm sure there are some clarifications that in the law, or Okay, item 4.11, which is policy 9160, which is revised to include the provisions of HB 319, which prohibit interference or disruption of a sporting or entertainment event. Such interference as defined in this legislation is subject to criminal prosecution. Any questions, Ms. Roberts?
So the fir, the fourth paragraph, we are selecting that fourth paragraph, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Maine, and that policy number that says 9211, district support organization should be 9215. It's on this sheet that we're doing, so I think it's just a typo by Neola.
All right. Item 4.12, volunteers. Senate Bill 676, modified statutory requirements related to criminal history checks through the Care Provider Background Screening Clearinghouse, including provisions related to potential employees, employees, contractors, and volunteers. SB 676 also extended timelines for re-screening individuals and added new requirement for initial status and changes in status reporting. So, let's see, I have one question. It looks like, there was a, wait, did I get it the right one? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. It's the next one. Are there any questions about this one? All right, 4.13 is direct support organizations. Senate Bill 1278, modified statutory provisions related to direct support organizations, including requirements related to contracts between the board and a DSO. Audit requirements of DSOs and a prohibition on the board permitting the use of property, facilities, or personal services by any DSO that does not provide equal employment opportunities consistent with applicable state and federal laws. Policy 9215 is revised to include these requirements. So I just had one question on this one. Go to this. So in the green, it says additionally, the board may contract with a DSO, that's the first large green section. And then it says, however, a retiree of the FRS must first satisfy the requirements for termination of employment. It just, that doesn't seem like it should be in the DSO policy, that addition.
Yeah, we'll check on that one too, because it's from Neola.
Are there any other questions from the board?
This is just clarification that the employee is not double-dipping as a contractor and also still being paid by an FRS employer, so, but the language that is being recommended by Neola does kind of run counterproductive to that, so we will, we'll get clarification on that. They just want to make sure that the employee is fully severed from FRS before then contracting with us as an.
So maybe it should say if a former or an employee, if this is the circumstance, because it just is thrown in there and it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense that.
Can we go back one for a minute?
To which one, volunteers?
Yeah. So on page two of three, we're eliminating the retiree volunteer program. So I, does that mean that the, that a retiree from the Martin County School District can still be a volunteer, but it's not in that program?
Correct. We, we do not have a retiree volunteer program, but a retiree may still volunteer.
So can you check into that? Because there is a teacher that used to teach here in Martin County that retired, that could not, that claimed on social media that she could not volunteer, she could not teach or volunteer back in our classrooms. So she got a job working at Treasure Coast Classical as a teacher, which is fine, because they're not covered by FRS. But her language in her post made it sound like she could not even volunteer here if she wanted. So I don't know if there's an FRS requirement that you, that if you're a retiree.
You have to stay out of here.
You can't volun, unless you have a retiree volunteer program. Is that the?
Which we do not have.
So any vol, so any retiree that we have cannot come for a year to even volunteer?
Correct. You have to stay off a site for an entire year if you've just retired before coming back.
So.
If Frank or, or if staff can address that further.
Why? Is that what we want to do? So wouldn't it be better, so for example, if Jen is a teacher and she retires and she wants to come back to volunteer?
She should be.
I would like her to be able to volunteer, in which case it would mean, it appears that if we selected that volunteer, retiree volunteer program, we would be able to do it.
Right.
And so that one that left and went to work at TCCA would have been able to come back and be a volunteer here.
Right, absolutely.
Correct?
See what you're saying, yeah.
So can we, can we select that retiree volunteer program and use it then?
Well, we are, I think we are. All the, everything that's in green is being added, but the first thing does say.
No, we, in the list, it says delete retiree volunteer.
Oh, see, I didn't, I just looked at, I'm just showing it as all green. If you pull it up.
Yeah, but the.
And it says plus, 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 we're adding all of those things, right?
That's, but if you look at the very top of it, the brackets in front of retiree volunteer program.
Well, there's a lot of things that aren't checked. A lot of the things on here were not checked, like, and there's also the principal, we need to talk about that, principal, department supervisor, or we need to select an option for that too. I did have that on my list, sorry.
Yeah.
But I think that when you look at it on here, it didn't actually delete it. I think the intent was to add it, but it does say retirees seeking to provide civic, charitable, and humanitarian services to the district during the first 12 calendar months following their retirement must meet the following criteria.
Right.
And that, but in here, it's showing it added.
Okay, in our spreadsheet, it's showing it deleted. So can we add it back?
Absolutely, we can.
And then do we want it to be the principal, department supervisor, or as applicable?
How about volunteer services?
Volunteer services?
Volunteer services.
Shall be responsible for maintaining the post-employment records in accordance with his following, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Glad we met that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, because everything in the, if you look at it, I didn't look at the book, I only looked at them online, but everything in green is added, everything in red is deleted Okay, now we'll move on to policy 9800, which is item 4.14, charter schools. Policy 9800 is revised to incorporate changes reflected in HB 443. The change, changes address payments to charter schools by the board and the new requirement that the district provide training to charter schools on systems the district require, requires I just had one scrivener's error, but I'll let you know what that is. All right. Any questions on that one from the board? Okay, see none? Let's move on. Item 4.15, which is student records. The revisions to policy 8330 incorporate the new statutory requirement in HB 543 that student records be transferred within three school days from receipt of the request, and that the records include, if applicable, a threat assessment report and any materials required by the Florida specific behavioral threat assessment instrument, which contains the evaluation, intervention, and management of the threat assessment evaluations and intervention, no, excuse me, intervention services. So item, that's, hold on, let me pull that up. So we have to pick an option on this one too, there's.
Right on page nine, and the superintendent's recommendation was select option one. So even though they're both in green, it's pick either one or two. I'm fine with one.
And I kind of like two, just because it spells it out. Doesn't require people to go searching for the statutory requirement. I, I just kind of like it, but I guess if the statute is.
Changes.
Changes, then it's easier. And then we have to choose how parents, I think, are notified, which I'm fine with via email.
Do I guess?
Yeah, hold on, what page was that?
The first one's on page nine of 11. This one's 11. The next one's on 11 of 11. So the option one, option two is on page nine. Do you all want one or two? I mean, I think one covers it. I mean, my only concern is that when they change the statute, then you're backtracking Amy?
One is okay with me.
Okay. So page nine would be one. Then page 11, do you have this one?
I don't. I only looked at them online, but, go ahead.
So on page 11, number three.
Mm-hmm.
It says email and/or mail was the recommendation. So it would be parents and eligible students will be notified via email and slash or mail anytime they're required to use an online educational service.
That's fine.
Number four would be if the student PII will be collected by the online educational service, parents and eligible students will be provided notification regarding the information that will be collected, how it will be used, when, and how it will be destroyed, and the terms of disclosure, if any, by mail and slash or, by email and slash or mail. And then.
Three is good.
And then number five, it's the first one, the board will not utilize any online educational service that will share or sell a student's PII for commercial purposes.
I'm good with both of those. All three of those. Okay, that wraps up our policies. We will see those again very soon. So in the meantime, if you have any changes, the next meeting is the time to, final time to really make any substantial changes, so if you have any, please let the superintendent Item 5.01 is items for the October 19 joint meeting with the city, county, and village of Indian Town. Are there any items that you would like to see presented at that meeting by our staff or the, or items that you would like to bring forward to the group? Did you?
I had spoken to Superintendent Maine about this some time ago, maybe something by CTE to update everybody with the programs that we have added and any enhancements that have been made.
Good with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that'd be great.
Let's, when we get together, let's talk about the scope of that. All right. Anything else?
Would it be possible at that time to see if we can use this setting as, you know, for future use for the joint meetings?
I don't know, will we be in a position to set up microphones in the?
Yeah, furniture's going to be, the tables, furnitures are going to be the issue.
Okay.
Beyond that, sometime next year, probably, but not for this, this next meeting. But at this next meeting, if you would like to discuss for future meetings, if that's what you meant, then yes, I think we could, we could have that conversation.
It's just kind of nice for the county to do all that work.
Yeah.
To do the setup and everything. And they had it all, they have the setup because during COVID, they shifted everything over to that building.
Right.
Because their meeting space is so small, so.
Could you repeat what Jennifer Russell said? We couldn't hear her back here.
We were talking about the general meeting of, the meeting that we have with the county, the city, and the village of Indian Town, and possibly moving it to. and possibly moving it to this building, hosting it here. Right now, it's at the Blake Library, right next to. Okay, next up are legislative priorities. Ms. Pritchett?
So I've repeated this several times, which you have, until September 14th to submit any of, of your own personal priorities because we're not able to do it collectively. And I received notification that I was appointed to the Legislative Subcommittee. Our first meeting is September 22nd, and I'll be going up to Gainesville in October to meet, to have our first kind of policy discussion openly with the other, other districts.
So we need to talk about as a group, if we have any, what our legislative priorities are going to be as a board.
Okay.
So FSBA does their own.
Yes.
And then we'll, as our designee, you will participate in the process of saying yay or nay, and then those will come back to us as a full board
Right.
to vote on. The same with the Greater Florida Consortium of School Board Members. School Boards, sorry. It will be the same, that slate will, of items will come back to us, and we will vote as a board whether we will support that agenda or not. I know at least with the Greater Florida Consortium, which is kind of all of the southern, goes around the state, they're mostly coastal communities. If one board votes not to accept an item, then it's removed. FSBA is a little bit different, but, so it's really important to have our voice heard at those meetings because that's our time to say we don't like that.
That's been published, right?
What?
Greater Florida Consortium, didn't they send us that?
Yeah, they did send it. So I am going to submit to FSBA also. Dr. Miller and I have been working on a project for an alternate pathway for students that, we have that subset of students, we talked a lot about them last year, that cannot pass either the ELA or the end-of-course exam. It's prohibiting them from graduating, so they've met every other graduation requirement. They have above a 2.0. They have all the graduation requirements. But they can't, and we looked at the data, this, maybe a two weeks ago, I think, and the majority of kids are, that fall into this group are, can't pass the ELA, the English language. A good bit of them are English language learners that came to us well after, most in high school, started high school, not knowing English, passed every single class, passed everything, even passed the math. It's, I was kind of astonished at the numbers because I thought the math would be what was holding a lot of kids back, but it's not. It's the English language, language arts component. So we're working on an alternative assessment for students that fall into that category. One of the options, we're exploring a couple of things, one that's already in place, it's just not as comprehensive, but the ACT offers an assessment for career readiness. It's a series of, series of tests over time. I think there's three total, and they're about an hour each, but they don't take place at the end of a course. It's like over time, they take these. It's really a lot, I'm, there's a webinar, and I'll send the superintendent the link. You guys should join it. I don't know enough about it yet, but there's a webinar on September 20th. You can go to the ACT website and click on events, and it's, it's in that, it's under there, and you can register for the webinar to attend. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at, is changing, and, but one of the things I think is going to be a hurdle is, you know, this is for that group of kids that have met every graduation requirement. But one of the things that we also noticed in the data is that the majority of the kids that are in that cohort that didn't meet one or the other of those, the testing requirements, the majority never participated in CTE. So that's, we have to do a better job as a school district of guiding those students into CTE programs. So one of the, one of the language changes that we're going to ask for is that they must have completed a, I think right now, the CTE pathway, it says two courses. But they also have to have achieved certification. So you can't just take a couple of CTE courses and that's going to be your pathway. It's, you actually have to receive an industry certification by the time you graduate from high school. So that they are ready to do something and apply the skills that they learned in high school to graduate in lieu of an FSA or, you know, the, excuse me, the ELA requirement. So that's kind of where we're going with that. But then we also have another cohort of students that statistically, they are not going to graduate from high school. They don't have the time to complete all the required coursework. So I feel that while we have those students through the 12th grade, we know who they are beginning in 12th grade, that statistically, they cannot complete their high, their standard high school diploma in a year's time. So can we prepare them as a school district to get their GED? And help them at least get their GED before they leave, because these kids are not coming back. And I, my goal, I think we'll get some pushback on that, but I think that as long as it, we, there are certain parameters that they have to meet in order to take the GED, as opposed to a traditional pathway. But it shouldn't count against a school district because the kids came to us, you know, two years, they only had two years of high school with us, and they can't make it, they're not going to graduate with a traditional diploma. It won't help us, but it shouldn't hurt us if we help these students at least leave high school with a GED at minimum. Because right now, they're just considered, even if they decided to get their GED later and they went to our adult education program, it still counted against us in that cohort of kids that didn't graduate.
So are you looking to remove them from the? No.
Not looking to remove them from the cohort. We're just looking to.
So what you would.
Have them not negatively impact our grad, graduation rate, because they statistically cannot, in the time that they were in high, in our high, high school, they couldn't get a traditional.
So you would be adjusting the progression plan so that they don't have to take the same courses that are in the progression plan? We would then, if that progression plan is then approved, then we would still get FEFP for those students? Even though we're doing, is your vision that even though we're doing training for GED passing?
I don't, I don't necessarily think that they're going to stop taking courses that are required for graduation. They're just going to have that element of preparation for their GED. They're still going to continue taking English and math and all the skills that they're going to need, but they're also going to be able to prep for taking the GED, the same way that we do the intensive reading courses for kids that don't pass the 10th grade ELA assessment. The same way we do that, except that's kind of what I envisioned. I don't know, we haven't worked out all the details on what that would look like, but I don't necessarily think that they're going to stop, they're not going to stop taking classes and trying to progress. It's just another alternative, because when they leave and all their friends graduate from high school, they're not coming back to get anything. So they're going to leave us and have nothing in their hand except a certificate saying, I don't even know what the certificate says. It's, but they're really going to get nothing. Unless we are given the ability to identify those students who can't, who will not get a traditional diploma.
Well, also allowing them to have their GED gives them the opportunity to go to the military, which gives them a career pathway.
I'd have to go back and look at the student progression plan, see if we have to modify that, but yeah.
Well, I'm not necessarily, I'm more concerned about this stat, the language that we need to change in the statute. And we have a lot of support for this. So I am, I think it's going to be part of a more comprehensive workforce bill, but you know, if you have concerns or questions about it, if you could just let the superintendent know, or Dr. Miller, so that as we're having discussions and bringing something more forward, we would like to have the support of FSBA on this as well. I think it will be something statewide, if we can get behind it, school boards across the state, I think it would be helpful. But we're going to have to be really careful that we don't create any loopholes, because, you know, we want to make sure that, because there is this thing, oh, well, you know, their, school districts are just trying to get around, work around, and it's really not about that. It's about helping kids, number one, graduate from high school and be career-ready, and graduate with something in their hand when they leave, so that they can actually get.
So are you submitting both of these by the September 14th date to FSBA?
Yeah, and it'll be, it, this will be comprehensive together, part of the workforce bill. And our local, Representative Snyder is running that bill.
Can I suggest that you put them separately when you give them to FSBA? Because even if FSBA picks up one of them, then they'll help with the one, but if they, if they're combined together and FS, and somebody at FSBA has a problem with it, then I don't want to kill both of them. Because if FSBA can pick up one on their agenda, we can pick up the other one just on our own.
Yeah. And we've kind of talked to Dan, Danielle, Dr. Danielle, about it, and so hopefully we'll have some more concrete language that we can submit and clear. And then Amy, the superintendent can get you that language so that you're very familiar, and it'd be probably good to meet with Dr. Miller once we finalize everything, so that you're well-versed to represent our idea to FSBA.
And I think it'll help if they're divided, if they're two different ones, so if they only take one of them.
Gotcha.
We can, yeah.
So that's the big, that, that was my big thing that I would like to see. Are there, is there anything that, anything else individually that we want to work on that, I mean, as board members, that we would like to be a part of our agenda? Amy?
So in legislation, there's, it's law, that a student in a hazardous safety zone can only get a bus up to fifth grade if they're under the two mile. I contend that sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders are also at risk. I don't know why it stops at fifth grade. And I, it's come up a few times in my dealings with families, and I just want to throw it out there that I have a feeling it's been discussed before, and I know it is, is money. It's about money and, and transportation dollars. But safety and security of our kids are, are really important, and a sixth grader crossing a busy intersection is no less protected than a fifth grader. So I throw it out there.
So I 100% agree with you. I know we had robust discussions and, about this. The hazardous walking conditions element of that language is also an issue, because I agree, I think, sixth through 12th grade, if these, some of these families don't have transportation, and you're dealing with kids that are prone to make silly decisions sometimes, and now with Bright Line coming through, and, you know, I always use the example of my own son who, he literally asked me, straight face, "Mom, can I just, can I ride my skateboard to school?" He has to cross, he would have had to, we were within two miles, he would have had to cross Kanter Highway, cross Colorado, go, or cross US 1 to Colorado, cross Colorado, go across the railroad track and cross again. And of course, my answer was, no, you may not ride your skateboard to school, but that's just the way kids think. And it's concerning to me with, with a lot of things. Like, I don't think kids should be crossing US 1. Any elementary student should be crossing US 1, especially, or a high school student for that matter. And we see what that has done in Palm Beach County. So I agree with you. I don't know, but it is a funding issue as well.
I think maybe, so I know that in the past, they've looked at reducing the two miles down to one and a half miles, okay? But I think it, it makes sense to submit by the September 14th to extend that hazardous walking language through, say, middle school. So let's say you ask for it to be extended through middle school, and the Transportation Survey should be able to tell us, we know where the hazardous walking areas are, so if we know what those areas are, we know what the increase is. We would know, so it's, it, I, I don't believe it would be as big an increase as it would be by reducing the two miles to one and a half miles. But if you live near a hazardous walking condition, reducing it to point five doesn't change the hazardous walking condition for the student who, no matter how far they are, it's still a condition. So it's more about the bus and the funding, and that's the, that's the prohibition, it seems. The prohibition is the funding of it. So the mileage is the least of the worry. It has more to do, as I think, with the hazardous condition existing. So I have one right in my neighborhood. I mean, it's literally at the end of my neighborhood. Bright Line, and it, it's a rotary, and you'd need three or four crossing guards just for kids to get over safely. And even those crossing guards would be taking their lives into their own hands because it's so bad. So reducing it wouldn't help the people who are less than.
Right, no, but what I was saying was, I know in the last several sessions, there's been, there's always been an interest in reducing
Okay.
the two miles to one and a half miles, but I think instead of using that language, it makes more sense to go after the hazardous walking kids.
Correct.
Because we know who the hazardous walking, we know which kids are in a hazardous, have to go through a hazardous walking area.
Right.
So since we know which kids, we know where they are, we know which kids have to go through them, and once, since we know who has to go through them, it would be relatively simple to then say, okay, we just need, in this mapping area, we need to know which ones are middle school. So how many more do we pick up that way? And I'm, what I'm saying was, I think we'll pick up less, so the cost would be less doing that piece of a fix than the fix that has gotten no traction.
Right.
Because the cost of, of changing the two miles down to one and a half miles all over the state is way too prohibitive. So that's what I'm.
All right, I, I.
But if you, but if you're going to do, if you're going to submit the thing, I'd really strongly suggest getting, getting Mr. Maine to get the information from Transportation that says, this is how many, in a, in a school district of our size, this is how many middle school kids this affects.
Okay.
And this is what the cost in our district would be. You know, so, so then you would be able to project that normally, we get $2 million for transportation. This would increase our cost by 2% or half a percent, or whatever the number is, so that then it, you know, we don't have everybody's information, but then when FSBA then discusses it, because the, the pushback you're going to get from FSBA is, no, they're not, nobody's going to go for the transportation thing, but I think if you go in armed with, I'm not asking. But I think if you go in armed with, I'm not asking for the two miles to be reduced to one and a half miles. I'm recognizing that hazardous walking areas are hazardous for a sixth grader.
I can't imagine we're the only district in the state that has this issue.
We're not.
So I, I think it would, might be great for each of those districts to get that same information and present it as a unified, this is what it's gonna, yeah, okay.
But you know, but if you get it onto FSBA's agenda, right, and you get them to approve it as their platform piece, then they will be reaching out to all the districts to say, if you have hazardous walking areas, we need your data, because we need to know what the total monetary impact is. Because we can tell you what the monetary impact is for Martin County. But we can't tell you for everybody else, because we don't have their transportation.
So I think it also needs to look at who determines what is a hazardous walking condition. So when we went through this, because there are provisions that, like you said, crossing US-1, the sheriff refused to put a crossing guard at US-1 for safety reasons, for the adult, not just the children, at a controlled, they think a controlled crossing, meaning at a red light, is safe on US-1. But who determines what a hazardous walking condition is, I think is an important piece of what needs to change. Because like Ms. Roberts said, we know, we were told by the sheriff where all these conditions existed, but the board decided to stick with two miles. And we didn't recognize any of those hazardous walking.
So, so I do think, if you go back and read the piece about hazardous walking, where it talks about you have to have a sidewalk so wide, the, the cars can't be going over a certain speed, et cetera. I think you may want to also have not just vehicle traffic going a certain speed. I think if we added the Bright Line train piece in, that any traffic, whether it's a train, whether it's, you know, so you may have a vehicle that slowed down to 40 miles an hour, but if you have a train going by at 70 miles an hour. Or what, you know, whatever it is, I think that that, that hazardous walking language needs to be cleaned up to recognize the Bright Line impact. So I think that's another piece that needs to, because that isn't, so the designation of a hazardous walking thing is a, a joint agreement between the county and the school district. That this is the hazardous walking thing. So for instance, the last, the last big hurrah was when they were expanding the road in front of Hidden Oaks Middle School. And because of the construction on that road, the speed on that road, and the size of the sidewalks on that road, there, that became a hazardous walking area. So kids who were trying to go to Palm City Elementary and had to go through that, were then considered, they were eligible for bus transportation. But hazardous walking, when it, when they finished the train, when they finished the construction of the road, everything, the hazardous walking piece went away. Because it, it was no longer considered a hazard, based on the definition of a hazard, you know.
I mean, I get it, some are temporary, but there are places in Martin where it's forever. It's never going to be safe. So I will, I will work with superintendent and get the information now presented and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, and just look at the whole piece about hazardous walking in that, you know, how many lanes? What's the speed on the road, like in Palm City, it's six lanes across. And for a first grader, crossing that street.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the reason that they took that highway and slowed the speed down. Not that the cars are going any slower, but we slowed the speed down, and then all of a sudden, it's no longer hazardous to cross the road to get to Palm City Elementary, because the speed is, the speed limit's less. So how could it be a hazard anymore? You know, so I think there's some sort of a tour.
But I think that's where we, we come in as a board. We, we do not have to recognize that that, just because by state law, it says, we can be more, we can't be more, like, we can't say, well, you know, it says 35, and the, we're going to say anything that's over 35. Maybe it's 45 miles, we can't do that. But if we said 25, that would be okay. So we, as a board, can change some of that ourselves in our own.
We just don't get the reimbursed funding. So the big, I mean, I, I think the Bright Line piece, if we can get them to recognize that the train traffic piece is a high speed.
So anybody that crosses a track would be helpful.
So anybody who's having to cross that high-speed rail track is now in a hazardous walking.
Right, which extends from, all the way down, all the way down. You know, it's like A1A, all the way down.
I saw it for the first time today, coming through Stewart. Was it the first time I saw it? Huh? It was going slow. I mean, it wasn't, I don't know if that's better or worse for kids crossing, it's like, I, still gonna.
Slower, they think they have, they have time.
It, there's, it's still going to be not good.
Thank you, appreciate the, the listen.
Sorry, I just lost my.
And I would do those two also, Amy, as two separate items. You know, do the one for middle school, and then also submit a second one to correct the language for what a defining hazardous walking thing. So that if they won't throw you out on, hopefully they'll pick up one of them. Hopefully they'll pick up both, but if they don't, maybe you'll have a chance with one of them.
All right.
Well, and we just will have to look at the, you'll get a lot of pushback from superintendents. Not, not ours, maybe, but the cost of it, I know it's going to be a huge factor. So we just need to figure out for us personally, what that's going to be. Of where we say, Orange County and Hillsborough. I know Hillsborough County, they had some school board members that fought it hard to the hazardous walking and busing situation, so. All right, is there anything else, any other legislative priorities that we want to talk about? All right. So we will adjourn this meeting, this workshop of the Martin County School Board. We'll take a quick, five-minute break, and then we will convene our special meeting. Very weak gavel sound. Okay, we are going to call to order this special meeting of the Martin County School Board. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? And we, if the board is okay with it, we'll move 7.04 to the beginning of the agenda. I know there are people here waiting.
Motion to approve the agenda with moving 7.04 up.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 7.04, personnel recommendations?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the boards. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing two staff members to you this evening that have been patiently waiting. The first staff member is not new, you know her. She is, was the current Assistant Principal at Citrus Grove, that we have now moved to the interim principal position. If Ms. Rose Ranka would please rise and congratulate her. Rose has been with the district for quite a while, right? And has been at Citrus Grove now for quite some time. We are really proud of you, and you will do great things in Darcia's place. And the staff knows you, the students know you, and things are going to just continue right on without missing a beat. So thank you for your service, and we appreciate it, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
I also would like to introduce a familiar face, was with the school district for seven years as a school psychologist, Dr. Paula Lewis. And she will be rejoining us as our new Director of Student Services. And she is joined this evening by her beautiful family. Would you like to introduce them, Dr. Lewis? They're here to support you.
This is my Aunt Lorraine. And it's just amazing, retired from Martin Davy Public Schools. And so is my Uncle Elijah. And we're all retired educators. The love of my life, Anthony Beer. A partner in all things. Just, I'm excited to be here. It's just an amazing pride, just to get back to Martin. I would love to hear it, seven years I was here, and I'm just excited to get to work, to be here and help register student services. And just, okay, to get back, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Lewis was most recently with Indian River County as their Director of Student Services.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
All right, let's get a motion on this, please.
Motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item 3.01, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, members of the community, staff, superintendent, deputy superintendent. Board members, item 3.01 is to request the board's approval of the final budget amendments for fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. These culminate the results of the operations for the fiscal year 2023, that began in July 1 of 2022 and ceased on June 30 of 2023. We, therefore, we ask your approval to, for these budget amendments to close out the fiscal year.
Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Morrison? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.02 is the report of financial data to the Commissioner of Education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is due by September the 11th, 2023, next week. However, we take the opportunity now to bring before the board the report that is in substantially completed form. We do have a few little things we need to tidy up on the notes and the management discussion. However, those will be completely done and transmitted to the DOE in time. The ES348 and the 145 pretty much are the transmitted documents that need to go up. So those have been completed. So therefore, we ask your approval for the ES348 and the ES145 to be transmitted to the Department of Education in accordance with DOE regulations.
Perfect, are there any questions from the board? Do I have a motion on item 3.02?
Motion to approve 3.02.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, this was, this item came, is coming back. What is, Mr. Morrison, what is this one? Recess special meeting to conduct, okay. I'm like, what? That's an item? I didn't read that correctly, sorry. I was like, reading it weird. Okay, so now we will temporarily recess our special meeting to enter our public hearing to adopt the final millage rates and budget. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Falls, if you could bring up the PowerPoint on the display, thank you very much. So board members, this afternoon, we are, we are asking the board's approval of the final 2023-24 proposed millage rates. By law, the millage rates must be discussed first, prior to, prior to the budget, and adopted in, in such order. Before you, you have, you should have several documents, which is a copy of this afternoon's PowerPoint, including copies of the two resolutions, the ES524, which is a Department of Education document, as well as a local resolution to adopt the budget. Also in front of you, you should have a copy of the final budget book. However, after this evening's proceedings, I'm going to ask board members if you could leave those budget books in your place. We had a printing snafu at the print shop this afternoon, whereby the, the cover of the book is the tentative budget, just the cover alone. However, the contents of the book are correct. So literally, we just rip off this and we will rebind the cover for you. So if you could just leave those at your place. However, the numbers, everything inside the book is correct. It was just, in the paper shuffle, they accidentally printed the tentative budget book cover as opposed to the final. The numbers that you will be seeing, however, in my presentation and in the resolutions, do match, and they are the requested, the budget numbers that are being requested to be adopted. So with that, if you could go to slide one, please, Diane? Okay, I'm sorry. So the board adopted in 2223, last year in September, a millage rate of 5.9880, which comprised of the required local effort of 3.24 mils. This year, it is, it has been recommended by the Department of Education at 3.1950, or a decrease of .0450. The discretionary operating millage, additional voted millage, and capital millage of .748, .50, and the capital millage of 1.5, all remain the same. So therefore, the total millage, as adopted by the board last year, was 5.9880 mils, whereas the proposed 2324 millage rate is 5.9430, or a decrease of .0450, as driven by the required local effort. The 2324 millage rate is less, is 1.39% less than the 2223 adopted millage rate. Next slide, please. However, according to Florida Statute 200, we have to calculate what we call a rollback rate. What is, what is, in, in theory, the rollback rate? It is what, if you were to raise the same amount of money that you raised last year, what would be the millage rate that you have to apply, given the fact that you had an increase in the tax roll? So this is the mill, the millage rate, we have to compare that against the proposed rate. The rollback rate, based on this year's millage, would be 2.8726 for the required local effort millage, .6632 for the discretionary operating, .4433 for the additional voted millage, and 1.3299 for the capital outlay millage, or 5.3090 in the rollback rate, as opposed, opposed to the proposed rate of 5.9430, which gives an increase of .6340, which is why, based on the calculations prescribed by the Department of Revenue in our TRIM ad, we had to notice, a notice of tax increase, because your proposed rate is higher than your rollback rate. So the rollback, the millage rate for 2324 is 11.94% higher than the rollback rate. Next slide, please. We also like to run, run our taxpayers through a scenario, one in which your, there's no increase in your assessed valuation of your home. The median amount, the average valuation, according to the property appraiser, was $696,814. Your 2223 taxes would have been $4,022.82. 2324 taxes would be $3,099,259, or a decrease of $30.23, or .750 less. Next slide, please. However, as we've just indicated, the tax roll has increased on an average of 14.68%. On an assessed valuation, last year would have been 594,512. However, we can only tax based on the Florida Constitution of save, save our homes on the first 3%. So the cap would be, what we would be able to tax on is $17,836. So your 2223 taxes would have been $3,410.24. This year would be $3,490.61, or a tax increase of $80.37, or 2.36% higher. Next slide, please, and then the one after that. Thank you. Moving on to the budget. The General Operating Fund, we're reporting an, a budget of, final budget of $249,532,366, or $20,328,541 in increase. On page 32 of your budget books, line 43, you will see an $11.8 million increase. There was a drop in state funding, but an increase in the local funding, as we've discussed, through, through the increase in the tax roll. And also an increase in the transfers. Again, the budget is being driven by a 14.68% in the tax roll. Just wanted to point out something on the appropriations, if you could turn to page 175 of your budget books. On page 175, at the bottom half, 2324 projected appropriations, you can see that approximately 73.3% of your appropriations, in other words, monies you're planning to spend, are going into your schools. Approximately 24%. into your schools, approximately 24% into your departments, and 5.596 or 2.5% is in budgetary reserves. We broke that out to show, to answer the question, where is, where is the money going? Because we heard that recently at one of the school board meetings. On the debt service fund, essentially the same. On page 177, if you turn to page 177 of your budget books, there's two pages over, you will see the 21, 2021A series certificates of participation. We, after this year, we'll have two more years left on that cop, which will completely be retired. That is the monies that we, the debt service, we have incurred for the rebuilding of Jensen Beach and Palm City Elementary School. So that debt will be retired. Capital projects, we have a decrease in the budget for next year of $6.7 million. As the board is aware, we are wrapping up those same projects of Palm City and Jensen Beach Elementary. We are bringing on some new projects into, into the, into the school year on pages 185 through 187. And looking at those, particularly on page 187, you will see Stewart Middle School, Phase II, Murray Middle School, and Warfield Elementary are the primary drivers of the budget in the new, in the new fiscal year. Food services can be found on page 192 to 193, and the increase this year is approximately $1.386 million. That's due to an increase in the fund balance over 21, fiscal year 2122. The federal grants can be found on page 200, and we have a decrease in the budget of $9.1 million over the prior year. As we spend down the ARP and the SRT2 funds, we checked in this morning on the budgets. The SRT2 has approximately $100,000 left, which is between the charter schools, their allocation in their budget, and also the indirect cost. All charter schools have been notified, once again this morning, that these funds are available and they are to turn in all their expenditures, so we can make sure we close out by the end of this month, September 30. And then the, finally, the enterprise fund on page 207, we're showing a smaller budget this year, based on the indirect increase in operating costs and indirect cost charges. Next slide, please. Madam Chair, at this time, I think it would be appropriate, we're on item 5.01, that we would sound the halls for any public input on the tenant, the proposed 2023-24 millage rates and the budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time regarding the proposed budget? Okay, seeing none, I would let you continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we ask approval for item 6.01, which is to authorize the superintendent to ensure that we take all the necessary steps to be in compliance with Florida Statute 200, TRIM. We ask your approval to move that forward.
Do I have a motion to approve item 6.01?
Motion to approve item 6.01. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, 6.02?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we also request approval of Resolution 2023-04, adoption of the final millage rates for the fiscal year 2324, as just discussed with the board and the public.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve 6.02. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 6.03?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we request approval of Resolution 2023-05, adoption of the final budget for fiscal year 2324. In addition to the Florida Department of Education, their Form ES139, which must be transmitted within three days of today's proceedings, we have the ES139 that matches everything that's in your budget and will be transmitted to the Department of Education as part of their compliance package. With that, we request approval.
Thank you. Excuse me, do I have a motion to approve item 6.03?
Motion to approve 6.03. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carter, for everything.
Leave the books on the?
Yes. I just wanted, in closing, Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity. Just wanted to give a shout out and thank you for anybody and everybody who had a hand in putting the budget together, all the meetings, all the cussing and discussing where we had to, all the back and forth till we finally came up with this afternoon's project. My thanks especially to the superintendent's executive team and all the staff members who had a hand in preparing the budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carter. Thank you for leading this. All right, next up is our student code of conduct. There is the red line. What page is it on?
Forty-six, I think.
Forty-six?
The printed one says forty-six, but the, is it different on the?
It's forty-seven if you go here, but.
Okay.
Depends where on the PDF.
Everybody there? Okay, there we are. Wait, forty-six. I have forty-six.
Forty-seven is on the computer. Forty-six if you're.
Okay. So the one thing we looked at was skirts, squirts, and dresses may be no shorter than two inches above the top of the knee. Shorts must be no shorter than four inches above the knee and cover the entire buttocks. I thought, I thought was, why, why are we removing "or" and putting "and"?
Because it can cover the entire buttocks but not be four inches because of the structure of people. So if you put "and" instead of "or," you've covered all the bases, so to speak.
So every short that's no further than four inches above the knee covers the entire buttocks, correct?
Has to, yeah. But not all of them, I'm just saying, anatomy-wise, you can have the entire back of you covered and not be four inches above the knee. It can be shorter. So if you add "and," it covers all the bases.
But that was the whole, I mean, to me, four inches above the knee, I mean, we basically are excluding every girl from wearing shorts to school. I mean, we're not excluding them, but they will never wear shorts to school at four inches above the knee.
But that was already in there. It's adding the "and" to cover the buttocks.
That's why we said "or" before, that if they are shorter than four inches above the knee, then it has to cover your bottom. I, I just don't, I don't know that the four inches and then two, I don't know, trying to.
I was contacted by some teachers who said, they're definitely four inches above the knee, but they're not covering the buttocks. So if you put "and."
Golly, that's a, that's a weird.
Well, that's the problem. That was.
Well, maybe we just take out "must be no shorter than four inches" and just say "must cover the buttock, the entire buttocks."
Isn't that what the "and" does? "And" cover the entire buttocks instead of?
But it has to be four inches and do that.
Right, that's what.
So we could just take out that whole thing about the four inches?
Or take out the whole thing about covering the buttocks.
Yeah, one or the other. Honestly, because they, they kind of contradict. I can't imagine, golly, a pair, four inches, I don't know, that's what that, I think that's four inches?
That's bigger than four inches, that's five inches, six inches, that's about four. I've had some.
That is a long way.
I've had some comments from people about the covering the entire buttocks issue of, it may cover your entire buttocks when you're standing up, but as soon as you bend over, it no longer covers your entire buttocks. So that becomes an issue. You know, the crease between your buttocks and your leg, that crease, that is not shown when it's covering your buttocks, but as soon as you bend over, you get to see that crease.
I, I, all I want to do is make sure that teachers are not in a situation where they're confronting students who have this issue, and that's why it was brought to my attention. So I, I brought it before, back to the board, that if you add "and," or if you want to just eliminate one of them, just so that it's very clear that everything has to be covered the way it should be covered. I'm good with the "and."
I, I just think it's, we're, we're right back where we started for girls.
Yeah, we are. But I'm okay with that. Because I'm still, if you're just covering your buttocks, as soon as you bend over, you're no longer covering your buttocks. So if you want to say, "cover the entire buttocks" instead, then I think you need to start adding disclaimers, "must cover the entire buttocks when you're bending over."
How about "at all times"?
Okay, that works for me.
So it can't just be when you're sitting down or when you're.
And the buttocks must be covered at all times. That would eliminate the issue altogether. That's all I'm trying to reach is the best way to get there.
So I.
Does that require more?
The shorts must cover the, the entire buttocks at all times.
Yes.
That's pretty clear.
It's very clear.
It is. I, I, I just don't like it because I've seen people wearing shorts that cover their entire buttocks with a hoodie or a sweater or something over it, and it looks like they're not wearing anything. I mean, all you see is the sweater or the, you know what I mean? I can show you pictures of them.
So what's the problem? Why would you be concerned about somebody wrapping their hoodie around their waist?
Okay, because a skirt, squirt, or dress, so if you think about a dress, we're saying that your dress can't be shorter than two inches above your knee. But I could wear a dress as a top and put on a pair of short shorts that cover my buttocks, gym shorts, and now I'm really wearing a dress that's eight or 10 or 12 inches above my knee.
It's a shirt now. It's a shirt when you wear it like that.
It is. And I, and I, I mean, I can count to three, so I can understand if you guys want to go that way. I just don't think it's appropriate.
And I don't know, a dress is much different than a pair of shorts on length. I mean, you're my, 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 I know my girls would never wear a short dress to school before. They probably wouldn't wear it now, maybe with some bike shorts underneath it or something, but.
Well, if it's a dress, I mean, so the trick is, I can wear a dress that's 12 inches above my knee, as long as I put a pair of shorts underneath it that's covering my buttocks.
Well, then it's a shirt. It's not a dress anymore.
Well, I'm going to claim that it's a shirt, is what I'm going to claim, but it's going to, it may look like a dress, but it's going to, we're all going to pretend like it's a shirt.
But if they bend over or whatever, they're shorts to cover what's underneath.
Sure.
So that, I think, is the main, making sure everything's covered.
If we just add "at all times," would that satisfy everyone?
It won't satisfy me, but it doesn't matter to me. Because I, because I really think that when you wear really short shorts and you have a top that's longer than your shorts, where it doesn't even look like you're wearing shorts, I mean, that's.
That sounds like a rare instance, and it can be dealt with, with the teacher.
It can't be dealt with with this. I mean, with this, you're allowing.
But what is your issue with it? Like, what, tell me, like, why wouldn't you want someone to wear a pair of shorts if they're going to wear a big hoodie that is, because a lot of girls wear longer shirts with their, with their leggings, or longer shirts with, or even a dress with a pair of leggings?
So why wouldn't we say?
Like, what's the difference?
Okay, so why wouldn't we say that skirts, squirts, and dresses must cover your entire buttocks at all times?
Well, if it's two inches above your knee, it's going to cover it. I mean, unless the wind is blowing or somebody is doing something.
Not two inches above your knee. I mean, why can't I wear a dress then that always covers my buttocks entirely? Is there anything wrong with that?
Well, yeah, because that's not what our policy says.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that if this is the policy.
And if you, a skirt, a dress is very different than shorts, and generally in what it covers. So if you're not wearing anything under your dress, it's a little bit different if you're wearing a pair of shorts that cover your buttocks. Now, if you're wearing shorts under your dress, it's a shirt.
Yeah, and then it can be as short as you want it to be, as long as you're covering your buttocks at all times.
Right. Because it's a shirt, it's not a dress at that point.
Right. If you all, that's the way you all want to go, that's, you're three of you, so.
Okay, I think "at all times" covers it.
Must cover the entire buttocks at all times?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion or a?
We need a motion to approve the code of conduct, please.
I make a motion to approve the conduct with the added language.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you. And I vote yes as well. All right, the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards' proposed 2024 legislative program.
Okay, do you want me to read, read it or just discuss it?
Yeah, if you want to discuss it, did you, or, did you want to just kind of give us an overview and we can take a vote and decide if there are any, or decide if there's any issues that we want to remove or exclude?
Okay. So the goal of this is to increase on a phased-in basis the average per-student funding to ensure that Florida is in the top half of the states and can provide a world-class education to enable its students to compete and excel in the universal marketplace, and that, in all cases, the legislation be evaluated and that it doesn't conflict with Home Rule Authority of School Boards to operate, control, and supervise all public schools within their district. And then they kind of, their, their priority issues are governance, funding, academics and accountability, operations. The new language, I won't go into all of it, but they want to expand pre-K programs to provide options for three-year-olds for academics and accountability. In operations, clarify that school districts are not permitted to reimburse the insurer for personal injury protection. Let's see. Funding, provide an annual increase in the base student allocation commensurate with the rate of inflation and cost of living increases, but no less than 5% new funding. And in governance, provide all districts the same flexibility that high-performing school districts currently receive. Wave audit-finding penalties for out-of-field teachers who are certified and teaching in related subject areas. So that's kind of a highlight of their priority issues.
So the only, really the one thing that I have an issue with is enhance the state of investment in high-quality VPK full-day programs. I think that three hours of instruction is enough for a three- or a four-year-old. I think the better way to go about it is to exempt school districts from offering extended day programs. Right now, for four, three- and four-year-olds, school districts would not be able to offer them. So they could do an extended day with wraparound so that families could actually send their kids to a, they would be reimbursed for the academic piece and then have a wraparound for.
and then have a wraparound for... I just don't know that, that a full day of instruction for VPK is, is never going to pass the test. I think it's unrealistic to ask for it, but a better one would be to ask for an exemption. Because if we wanted to offer extended day or any kind of wraparound, we would have to be DCF-licensed because three and four-year-olds are considered childcare. And it's a burden, it would, it's a huge burden on districts, and it's a burden on families as well. So, if we could offer that wraparound care during those additional hours and provide maybe not in, um, instruction, but developmentally appropriate programming during the day for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. I 100% would support that. But right now, it's not an option for public schools. Only private childcare, licensed childcare providers can offer that to families.
But we can't, but we can't change anything. So, you're just wanting to remove the enhance the state investment piece?
The piece about a full-day program.
So, we can't replace it with anything? The only thing we can do is remove it. Are you okay with the revised the school readiness preschool application to permit funding for school day and after-school wraparound services for pre-K students?
We already do offer that. So, I don't know what, I, that's where I think that the full day, when they say full-day VPK program, we're talking about two additional hours. And then, three and four-year-olds would, a full hour of that would be napping or more. And then, another hour would be lunch. And so, now, we're talking about fi, maybe a five-hour day, including those two activities. And are we going to ask for seven hours of funding for a three and a four-year-old when they really should be after those things, doing struc, more structured play? And it's, it's a lot to ask for those things. But we already offer after-school and wraparound for pre-kindergarten students, just not in the public school system because public schools are not licensed by DCF.
But that's the one that they're asking for, the third one on the academics and accountability. So, they're asking for it.
But it, that's not what it says.
Revise school readiness preschool application to permit funding.
This, revising the school readiness preschool application is not going to allow school districts to do that. They will have to revise the rules for DCF. This is not a DOE ask. This is a DCF ask. It's about the licensing requirement.
So, do we want to approve this with the extraction of the pre-K?
Well, we can't, honestly. I, I mean, I'm okay with that. The problem is, the way they present it to us, we would have, that whole funding thing goes away. We don't approve a section of it? That's why it's kind of, because they have it all lumped together. We can't just say, oh, no, we don't like that one piece of it.
So, how do we proceed?
I think the window is passed for us to contribute to it because they developed this what, two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm okay with just accepting it exactly the way it is, figuring that, knowing that they're not going to get a whole lot of traction with everything, but at least they...
I don't think they'll get any traction with, well, unless they can get... I think the, the goal should be, honestly, to change the DCF licensing and exempt school districts from the licensing requirement.
Right, I just kind of, I feel like if we weren't there to discuss when they did this, to then, the people who discussed it and decided this is what they wanted, for us to say, well, we weren't there, but, but take out your governance piece.
So, why, then, why do we, why does it come to back to all 67, or all the school boards that are involved? Because only one person typically goes to that when, when it's discussed. So, that's the whole point. They're represented by a small group. That's why it comes back to the bigger group. So, because, because we weren't there, we, now, we're going to vote on it and say yes, even though we don't agree with it?
So, do you want to table it or just say...
Well, I, I think it, it poses a larger question is, the first question is, do we want to be members of the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards?
Absolutely not.
That's the first question. So, and, and I feel like if you're going to be in the club, right? Then, when you're in the club, you evaluate what the club does for you. And then, if you participate with the club, when they have their meeting down wherever they have it at, when they have your meeting to discuss their priorities, that then you would have been participating and been part of this. Now, there have been consortium meetings before when they've done this, where there's been one member from the Martin County School Board that's gone. There have been other ones where there have been three or four that have gone to it. So, I mean, it's not like if you're a member of the club, you, you don't have the opportunity to discuss it. But I kind of feel like, I, I mean, just imagine if we're a member of the club, they had a meeting, we didn't go to, we chose to not go to the meeting. We had other things going on, so we didn't go to the meeting. They came up with a thing, and we could, we have the ability to say, well, we don't want any of this. The only thing we want is the governance piece. I, I kind of feel like, if you don't want any of it, then don't belong to our club. I mean, it's kind of, we'd save the money of paying them the dues. We wouldn't, you know, I mean, we have...
Do we pay them?
Greg now, now?
Well, yeah, and I just don't see the value in spending three days down in Key Largo it, because I know that it's going to come back here, and we're going to get a chance to voice our opinion. I mean, that's the, that is the whole premise of their, the way they set it up. I didn't make those rules. They made the rules.
So, what I'm hearing as the bigger issue is, do we, as a body, want to be a part of this club? And if we don't, then we don't have to discuss this or participate. I don't know what, I don't know what else to, to, to think about it. Have we been participants previously?
Yes.
And what changed?
Well, nothing's really changed, except that I just honestly, I don't see the value in it. It's pretty much run by the larger counties there. And our voice isn't that great. So, I don't really consider it. I don't think that they've accomplished a whole lot. I think we have our advocacy person. I think that we could save ourselves this money from the dues and, you know...
So, why don't we discuss...
Yeah, so we were members before we had Greg. And the thing that we really got from them, I would say, was access. So, if you, when you went to Tallahassee, you know, and they had a room and they brought different people and different legislators in who could talk and you could ask questions to, et cetera, there was access that you got. That if you didn't have, if you, if you didn't... So, you know your own legislators, but somebody else, it would be harder to get that access.
And now Greg...
Now, we really don't have an access issue.
Okay.
So, now, we're in a position where we are united as a Greater Florida Consortium because we're the wraparound counties that are waterfront. The wraparound counties that are waterfront have issues that are similar in nature, whether it has to do with hurricanes, whether it has to do with high cost of living, high property values, those type of things. They're not the rural, less populated ones, you know? And obviously, they want as many of those wraparounds as they can because then they can claim, rightfully so, we represent X percent of the local funding that you're collecting. We also represent X percent of the students that are in the state of Florida. So, they've had that claim because their Miami-Dade, their Collier, their Lee, their, you know, those, the bigger counties that are around there, so...
So, does it, I, I like to kind of get to the heart of the matter. Is this something that has to come on an agenda to determine by all of us, do we want to stay involved with this or not?
This will have to come back as another agenda item for...
So, can I make them...
When our dues is...
Okay.
Up. And I don't know when that is.
So, is this, is, may I propose that we put this on an agenda to determine exactly where we want to fall with this?
And not vote on this one way or the other?
Correct. Just leave, just table this.
Yeah, just leave it until, just do no action on it and just put it on, yeah.
Do I need to make a motion to do that?
Oh, we don't have our...
I think you, I, I think if we just didn't have any action on it, there's no action on it. We didn't do anything, no motion, no anything.
Okay.
And it can come back as another item. If we table it, then you table it to a time certain, and you have to have a discussion about it then.
Okay.
But I'm thinking that the agenda item that may come back may look different than this agenda item. This agenda item is purely, what do you want to do with their...
So, no action?
Proposal, so, otherwise, we're just, yeah.
Okay, so, item 7.02, we're going to, going to take no action and possibly have further discussion at a future meeting about this.
Okay.
Are we good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right, next up is 7.03. Enid Martinez, the literacy tailor. Ms. Lauren... Lauren Raebner and Heather Platt.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Maine, Heather Platt, Director of Professional Learning, and Lauren Raebner, Principal, Palm City Elementary School. So, we wanted to bring this to you this evening for approval. Ms. Raebner has talked to Enid Martinez. She's a consultant that will come in and do work in regards to ELA. Her PTA has approved paying for her to come in, and they are hoping to start the work as early as September 18th.
Do any board members have any questions about this? Ms. Roberts?
So, this is not in your professional development budget line, et cetera, because it's coming purely out of Palm City?
That is correct, yes.
Elementary, yeah.